Well, good evening. I would like to call to order this special meeting of the Newport News School Board for Tuesday, October 5th, 2021. On behalf of the members of the school board and the superintendent, I welcome you, each of you present and watching. A quorum is present to transact the business of the school division. We have one member of the school board who wishes to participate electronically in our meeting. As indicated in Board Policy BEE, electronic participation in meetings from remote location, the board member must make such a request, cite the reason for remote attendance, and the board must approve the request by a majority vote of the members present. School Board Member Terry Best has made such a request. Dr. Best, would you like to, would you please share your reason?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I respectfully request that the board allow me to participate remotely due to COVID-19 restrictions.
You heard, you heard Dr. Best. Is there a motion to allow electronic participation for Dr. Best?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion for electronic participation for Dr. Terry Best.
Thank you. You heard the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
A second by Mr. Ely. Any further discussion or questions? There being none, and then Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Hunter?
Four.
Mrs. Searls Law?
Four.
Mrs. Aiman?
Four.
Mr. Ely?
Four.
Mr. Brown?
Four.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you. All right. We'll now begin tonight's meeting with a pledge of allegiance. And I'm going to ask Mr. Ely, would you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the God of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Ely. We have a simple agenda tonight. There's one item and one item only on our agenda, which is item 2.01. The board is going to hear a presentation on the school safety plan for Heritage High School and Huntington Middle School from the superintendent. And Dr. Parker, please take it away.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I first like to give out, give some, show some appreciation to the staffs of Heritage High School and Huntington Middle School, the administration, and the community, our students who've participated in the processes that will be discussed this evening, as well as our staff, and also our school division personnel who will be presenting this evening, who have taken the lead in meeting, having these scheduled meetings since September 20th, to make sure that we are comfortable with the information that we're presenting this evening. While we still have work to do, I believe tonight we'll be able to give the board and our community some information as how we plan to proceed moving forward, and the work that it will take and require from all of us in order to ensure our student's safety. So with that being said, I will call forward our executive director of secondary school leadership to come forward and begin the presentation this evening. Dr. Blow and Dr. Barnett?
Good evening, School Board Chairman Brown, Vice Chair Searls Law, members of the school board, and Dr. Parker. I am Dr. Felicia Barnett, Executive Director of Secondary School Leadership.
Good evening. I'm Dr. Eleanor Blow, Director of Secondary School Leadership.
This evening, we will share a summary of the events that occurred on September 20th at Heritage High School. We will present what has occurred since the shooting, including supports for staff, families, and students, the work of the Heritage Huntington Safety Plan Committee, and preliminary action steps of the reentry safety plan. We'd like to note that each school in Newport News has a safety plan and a crisis plan in place. However, this presentation will outline additional measures that will be implemented for student and staff reentry. Prior to discussing the reentry safety plan, Dr. Parker will review the Newport News Public Schools layered approach to school safety.
Okay, I'm on?
Yes, sir.
All right, so we were asked a while back to explain our safety procedures in our school division. And this is, this graphic kind of explains, shows the layered approach that's available to all of our schools in order to provide a safe environment for students. And some of these processes are very familiar to you because we engrain those in the daily activities of our schools, such as the beginning of the school year where students and parents review and sign a student code of conduct. We have to have a disciplined environment in schools in order for students to understand what is appropriate behavior and appropriate consequences to address inappropriate behavior so that our students understand what it takes to, to conform to a school environment. So moving down that layered approach, I'll go ahead and read through each one of them. Relationships and student mental well-being. Now, why that's important is because our students are our primary reporters for school safety. Believe it or not, there are more of them than any of us in our schools. Students usually report incidents of unsafe conditions, things that have brought to school, inappropriate things that have brought to school to people that, who they haven't feel confident in approaching and communicating with. So forming effective relationships between teachers, students, administration, our security officers, and students allows us to not only create an environment where students can support the safe environment, but also we want to make sure that there are seamless ways moving into the next layer for students to report, how to anonymously report issues of student safety. So we, this week, we actually had a report from a student that led to a tip at one of our schools and an investigation that we found that led to us, not avoiding an unsafe situation, but someone had brought something to school that was not supposed to be there. Students report all the time, and encouraging an environment where that is done confidentially and appropriately is in our best interest in terms of school safety. And later in this presentation, we'll show how some of that anonymous reporting takes place. Technology to support student safety is also a big area. How do we continue to monitor student safety on social media? How do we provide the access for students to provide tips to us? So technology to support student safety is very important. Then you move to the building. In our schools, we normally have a point of entry in our schools, and everyone knows this, when you come to a school, you either use a buzzer access, you're identified with a visual camera, you're allowed inside the building for access, you're reported to the main office, and you enter, and you provide identification in our Raptor system. The Raptor system is designed to identify visitors to our schools, whether some of those run through a sexual predator registry. But before giving a visitor a badge in our building, they are screened in the main office prior to that. Secondary schools also have points of entry that are monitored by some of our security officers, which is another layer of support. And around the schools, most schools have locked in accesses on the exterior of the building and other areas of the building during the instructional day. So your physical access to the building is limited, and that is a security measure. When you go a little step further, you have your video surveillance from the parking area onto the interior of the buildings, which also allows us to monitor the exterior and interiors of our facilities. So building access and monitoring is very important in schools, allows us to maintain a safe environment, also to record things that are taking place. Safety drills and procedures are very important. We are mandated by the Commonwealth of Virginia to provide safety drills on a regular basis, not only intruder drills, but also fire drills, tornado drills, other types of drills that allow our staff and our students to become acclimated to emergency procedures and what to do in an unsafe situation. During roughly around the first 20 days, the first month of the school year, we conduct several fire drills and evacuation drills, but we also move towards intruder drills during that time as well to make sure that we're, our students are becoming, understand the expectations. If there is a lockdown in our schools, what to do during that lockdown. Safety procedures and emergency situation training continue on with our staff. Our security officers are trained to make sure that they can handle altercations between students, interactions, and we make sure that we have safe procedures in our schools, individually in schools, to make sure that we can maintain a safe environment. I mentioned physical security. We have Newport News has 61, currently 61, security officers, more than many schools on the peninsula. Our security officers maintain a presence in our schools and are trained to, to work effectively with students and staff to secure the environment and also control the entry points and travel through the buildings and the cafeterias, monitoring spaces in the building, and so forth. Another layer of support is searches. We conduct both random and planned searches. Examples of random searches, we talked about in our upcoming planning for reentry to Heritage and Huntington, but random searches are conducted in our school division and may involve winds or metal detection as well as part of that searching. But when a student is, comes, leaves our school grounds unauthorized or returns to school grounds unauthorized, we're required to search. If there is a tip that a student may have something in their possession that is inappropriate, administrators can search a student under reasonable suspicion, which is a lower standard than a police officer, which uses probable cause. So searches are conducted in our schools as another measure for safety procedures, and many of those searches are conducted as a result of someone maybe informing our school administration that there may be something on campus that may not, that may should not be there. But increasing random searches is a strategy that we are considering. Now, social media monitoring. Unfortunately, we live in an age where almost everything is posted online. So monitoring social media, getting tips from social media, parents are a good source of information that we receive, students. So we do monitor social media to, and to alert our schools of any unsafe situations or circumstances that may bring their way into the school, the school setting. So that is a layer, a layer that we continue to work with, and we work with our local authorities on social media monitoring as well. We recently had a string of, around the region, a string of online threats. It's after September 20th, and we worked with our local authorities to start identifying some of those perpetrators that were posting things on social media, and that was very effective, and we did actually find one of our perpetrators in Newport News. Community-based reporting is very important. I mentioned this in a parent newsletter that went out at the end of last week, that our real, basically, our first layer of defense on school safety is in the communities and our homes. And we have to think about, from at that standpoint, because many, many of the things that are brought into schools are community-based issues, are family-based issues. Student has access to a weapon in their home, they make bad decisions. We understand that many of our children are going through things that impact their behavior, both in the community and in home, and at home. But providing that community, a safe community environment where students can have healthy relationships and understanding, working with families to ensure that these, that issues do not arise in our schools that would impact our safety is another layer of support, and that's where our community partnerships come into play. And finally, our communication with parents and students, making sure that we communicate our expectations, making sure that we communicate what's, what it needs to make, what we need to do to maintain a safe environment, and continuing to inform our students of expectations that we have for them while they're on school campus. So we look at our holistic approach. All of these things are important. None of them can be taken out in isolation and say that they will maintain school safety in perpetuity. I think that the entire system itself really builds on itself as we look at the entirety of our safety program. So with that being said, I'll turn it over to our staff to continue the presentation.
We will resume our presentation with a recap of what occurred or happened at Heritage and Huntington on September 20th. A Heritage student brought a weapon to the school in his bookbag. The student was approached by another student, and an altercation occurred between the two. A teacher in the hallway did intervene. The student with the weapon began discharging the weapon in the direction of the student who he was involved in the altercation with. Students began to run for safety, and two students were hit and sustained non-life-threatening injuries. The shooter ran out of the school, and the incident is not currently viewed or as a mass casualty event. There's no further information at this time regarding the situation as it's still under investigation by the Newport News Police Department. As a result of the incident, we have identified some issues or challenges with security. The first identified item is that on the day of the incident, there were three of the four assigned security officers present in the building at the time. One of the officers was out on leave. The school resource officer, the Newport News Police Officer, had a split assignment. He was at Achievable Dream Middle and High School at the time of the incident, and many of the SRO officers have split or shared schools. The Heritage SRO was also shared with Newsome Park, Achievable Dream Middle and High School, and with Heritage and Huntington. The event did occur during a major hallway transition during second lunch, so there were over 300 students transitioning from the cafeteria at the time of the incident. And the incident occurred on the ninth day of school as students were adjusting to the return to face-to-face full-time instruction, and many of the students, as we know, participated in virtual instruction this past school year and were re-acclimating themselves to being back to the structures of being in the building. Since the time of the incident, several meetings and stakeholders have come together. As you can see from the list of dates of meetings and various things that have taken place, faculty meetings have taken place. We have had social, emotional supports for students, staff, and families in place from the day of the incident to the present day, and will continue, and we'll hear more about that later in the presentation. We've had several debrief meetings, including a debrief meeting with the Newport News Police Department. And then several safety plan meetings have ensued since that time to develop a plan for reentry back to Heritage High School and Huntington Middle School, and we've received feedback from various stakeholders, and we will talk about that in just a moment.
On behalf of the Newport News Public Schools, we would like to thank the board for their support during this difficult time. The faculty, staff, and administration are appreciative of your compassion. At this time, we would like to have our principals, Dr. Earlene Hunter, Principal of Heritage High School, and Mrs. Ebony Griffin, Principal of Huntington Middle School, to please stand. On behalf of Newport News Public Schools, we would like to publicly thank you for your leadership, support, and care for your school community during this time of crisis. Thank you. The Newport News Public Schools Crisis Team has provided resources to support the mental wellness of students, staff, and families. At this time, Dr. Michelle Mitchell, Executive Director of Student Advancement, will share the resources provided as well as next steps for continued support.
Good evening, School Board Chair Brown, Vice Chair Searls Law, board members, and Dr. Parker. I am Michelle Mitchell, Executive Director for the Department of Student Advancement. And as my colleagues stated, I will present you with some of the things that we did in response in terms of supporting students, parents, and faculty. The first thing that we did was to work on reunification of students and families. We had two teams. One team responded to Riverside Medical Center and partnered with the Newport New City Emergency Services Response Team to provide support to the families at the hospital. The second team responded to the school and assisted with reuniting students and families and being available to support those students and faculties that needed support at that time. I want to share with you that the individuals that are a part of that team are trained to respond to trauma. They are social workers, they are psychologists, they are mental health therapists, and they are student support specialists who also have a mental health credential. The next thing that we did was to immediately put together a student check-in. Now, that student check-in was provided online for students, and students were to respond to two questions. One question was, did you make it home or to another location safely? And the second question was, would you like to request that a student support member contact you? Because we are aware that all students aren't necessarily going to reach out, so we gave them the option online. Many of our students clicked yes, and they added their phone number. Obviously, we still had access to phone numbers in Synergy, but some of them put their cellphone number. The next thing that we did, which we found to be a very powerful move for us to be able to support students, was to create a support line, a hotline, if you will. And so we immediately put that up. We had the support team available to respond to that through 8 o'clock at night. And then what we did, because we were done at 8:00, after 8:00, we partnered with the Community Services Board for Hampton and Newport News, and they dedicated a separate line just for our students and faculty and parents. So other people could have access to that line if that number was shared, but this number was shared only with students, families, and faculty members. And while they are not able to tell us who called, the Community Services Board did indicate that they received a great number of calls from parents, from staff, and as well as from students. That line was open 24 hours. So that was important to know, that if a student woke up in the middle of the night or a staff member, they did have someone that they could immediately reach out to. We continued that line. Initially, we were having that line for several days. We had students who requested that we keep it open. They would speak to a social worker and say, would you, can I call you back tomorrow, or would you please call me back tomorrow? So that line was extremely supportive and helpful for our students. And as I, as I mentioned earlier, our Community Services Board did dedicate a 24-hour hotline for us. Additionally, we provided virtual as well as in-person support. So the support team provided a link for virtual services. Students were able to access that link at any time of the day. We had people just standing by in a Zoom room, ready to receive students. The team also met with students individually. So as a student logged into the breakout room, they didn't have to be concerned that they were going to be in there with a group if they didn't want to be with a group. They were able to then go into a breakout room and have individual support from one of our staff members. The onsite support, our team was at Heritage and Huntington, and they were able to provide support for students when they came to pick up their belongings. They were able to provide support to staff members as well onsite. They had two separate spaces, one for Heritage and one for Huntington. And I want to share with you that not only did they provide support for the faculty, oftentimes people view faculty as the teacher's instructional assistants, but we also made sure we provided support to the custodial staff, for the cafeteria staff, for the security staff, because at Heritage and Huntington, like much, many of our schools, those individuals are deeply embedded in their school, and this was a trauma for them as well. So they were able to have sessions with someone from the support team. Therapy referrals were made. Now, you are aware that we are the only district on the South Side and this side that actually hire mental health therapists. So referrals were made, parents were able to call and say, I'd like someone to see my child on an ongoing basis, and they were able to put those things in place. As you know, that there was a safety focus group that included students, and so during that safety focus group with students, the support team members were available on Zoom in breakout rooms so that if students were having a moment and they needed someone to speak to during the focus group, they were able to go into a breakout room to receive immediate support right there onsite. So for faculty and staff, we provided many of the same supports, as you see. We did provide onsite support, we provided telephone support, we also provided the hotline from Hampton Newport News Community Services Board. One thing that is different for faculty and staff is staff have the, from students, is they have the opportunity to seek support from Optimum, which we call EAP, the Employee Assistance Program, referral program, where they could receive individual counseling, but they also, EAP has provided virtual counseling for the school in groups. So you have an option as an employee to do the group session, but you also have the option to do the in-person session, I mean, the individual session. What's important also to know about EAP, they have also said to us, we had a high volume of staff members calling for support, but they are not able, obviously, to tell us who they are, but they are continuing, continuing to provide support to faculty and staff members. When we resume school, staff from the team will go onsite and be there as long as necessary to provide support for staff, for students, as well as family members who feel the need to come to the school. I do want to back up for a moment and say that when students came to pick up their supplies and their materials, the parents that came with them were also able to seek support from one of the support members, and we did have many parents to take, take, you know, advantage of that opportunity. We will continue, as I said, upon return to school, we will continue to have onsite as well as virtual support. Some individuals prefer virtual support versus face-to-face. We will continue to maintain the support line. We are continuing to partner with the Newport News and Hampton School Board, I mean, Community Services Board for the telephone support line. They have extended that to us for as long as we may need it. And one of the things that we are doing that is a little bit outside of the box is we will provide each student from Heritage and Huntington a support box. I do actually have an example of an elementary support box, but when they return to school, we know that when they go home, they may feel and have some feelings. So they may call the line, they can seek support, but they also will have a support box that will have things in it for them. For example, it will have phone numbers of where they can call. It will have the names of different types of apps that they can put on their phone that can help them when they're stressed. There will be stress balls in there. There will be these little things that kind of look like when you're packaging things for UPS and you pop them, but they are colorful and you, you pop them and they fill back up. So it kind of releases stress for students. So we will be creating a box for every single student to be able to have at home when they're, they may be alone, or they, they may just need something to do to occupy their minds. So we will be doing that for all of our students. Now, in terms of next steps for faculty and staff, professional development will be provided for staff members so that they know what signs to look for when a student is experiencing some level of trauma. And they also will receive first aid training. It's called first aid youth, youth mental health training. So everyone at Heritage and Huntington will receive that first aid training. I think it's important for me to share with you that every staff member in the division will receive that training, but we are beginning with Heritage and Huntington. So they will, in the beginning, have a professional development about the signs to look for when the students return so that they can get that student to the person that can support them, and then we will follow it up with the mental health training for, for youth so that they are a little bit more well-versed with what to look for. Again, we will continue the onsite and virtual support for as long as it takes for students, for faculty and staff to feel like they no longer need it, but they certainly can pick up the phone. One of the things that we will do that I'm really proud of is that we have grouped the support team in threes, and they will be assigned to a team. So for example, the office staff will have three mental health professionals that they can reach out to at any time that are on our staff, and those individuals will also schedule times. Staff can choose to pop into the group, or they can choose to use EAP, or they can choose other, other things that they may feel that are best for them. But for example, the English department will have three people, the custodial staff will have three people, the office staff will have three people. So they will be the go-to people for them for the duration. We will also continue with the Employee Assistance Program referrals. We will also continue with the virtual group therapy through EAP, and the YMCA has been gracious enough to reach out and partner with us, the YMCA of the peninsula, so meaning any one of our YMCA's. Every faculty member at Heritage will have, and Huntington will have seven visits to the YMCA, and their family members will have that opportunity as well, because we know that for some people, it's not enough to talk to someone or have someone to listen. They want to do something physical. So we have partnered with the YMCA, and they are in the process of also creating a survey for both faculties of all the other things that they have in their facilities, and they, the faculty will be able to say to them, this is what we would like you to provide for us. So we are happy to have that partnership with the YMCA. We also will provide therapy dogs onsite, and obviously, if you're a person who's not an animal person, that's okay, but you are a person who feels you can benefit from having the therapy dog, we will have the therapy dog. But you are a person who feels you can benefit from having the therapy dog, we will have the therapy dogs available. And we will also have for faculty and staff a relaxation room, which is very different from a faculty lounge. And in the relaxation room, there will be things for positive affirmation. There will be um lots of things that will help faculty and staff members have the opportunity to exhale and, and to relax. And I do want to share with you, some of the things in there could be puzzles, they could be therapeutic coloring books, uh mindfulness spaces, yoga, a mini zen garden, different kinds of things in there that will be available to all the faculty and staff. And again, I do want to stress that the support team is available for the duration. The social workers, the psychologists, the school support um specialists, and the licensed mental health therapist. And they are about thirty-five people strong. So they are available to support s, uh students, faculty, staff, and families. And at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Felicia Barnett, and she will talk about virtual instruction.
One of the primary goals of Newport News Public Schools was to return students to instruction as soon as possible with crisis team support. Times were established on September twenty-second and twenty-third for students to pick up belongings and receive technology support in preparation for virtual learning. Since September twenty-third, students have been engaged in synchronous and asynchronous instruction following their normal bell schedule. Student or class check-ins are also used for attendance and wellness checks. Additionally, the Newport News Teaching and Learning Department has supported teachers through professional learning communities by making modifications to curriculum and assessments.
In an effort to develop an updated safety plan, several stakeholders were a part of the debriefing and collective, eh collaborative efforts to build the reentry plan. These members represent various Newport News Public Schools departments, as well as representatives from the city of Newport News. This committee also engaged with students and parents to solicit feedback and gain perspective on next steps. From the after-crisis debrief meeting, faculty meetings, student focus groups, the following themes were identified of the greatest concern. Usage of metal detectors. Many had concerns that metal detectors were not consistently used for student safety checks. Security concerns. At the time of the incident, Heritage was staffed with four security officers for a large campus. Lockdown procedures. State procedures require lockdown drills to be conducted the first twenty days of school. Due to the time of the incident, the school had not yet reviewed or conducted the lockdown safety drill. Availability of counseling and social emotional supports. All stakeholder holders wanted to make sure that supports would be in place for faculty, staff, students, and families. The need for better communication. Understanding that this was a crisis event, the first priority was to ensure the safety of students and staff. Updates and, and communication may not have been as timely due to the need to secure the area and work with the local law enforcement to resolve the situation. As a result of the themes, the major component, the major components listed will be the focus areas of the reentry plan for Heritage and Huntington. The next few slides will give a preview of some of the considerations for the reentry safety plan. Wellness and staff and, for staff and students. Continued and ongoing social emotional supports for students and staff by the Newport News Crisis Team were als, were one of our primary goals. Dr. Mitchell outlined pre, in the previous su, slides, the supports that are currently being offered to students, staff, and families and will continue to be vi, provided as long as needed. Staggered and gradual transition back to school for staff and students. In the development of a timeline for return of students and staff, it is con, we will consider a staggered and gradual transition back to school. Reentry, family and student open house. A date and time will be shared with students and families in the near future to review safety measures and allow students to re-enter the building before returning to class. In conjunction with morning meetings and small group town hall meetings, this will provide another layer of mental wellness support. Athletics will resume this week with the support of the crisis team. Regarding school safety, the following adjustments will be made prior to the return regarding school safety. Increase the number of security officers. Six officers will be assigned to Heritage High School with one officer assigned to Huntington Middle School. The Newport News po, Newport News Police Department School Resource Officer will be assigned full-time to Heritage High School, but will also be assigned full-time to each of the high schools. So each high school will have their full-time assigned SRO. Increased random bus and classroom searches with the use of metal detection, the frequency will increase. CRAZE, the Civilian Response to Active Shooter Event, will provide strategies, guidance, and a proven plan for surviving an active shooter, an active aggressor event, or other critical incident. Newport News Emergency Operations Center will provide the training for the staff upon return. Also in reference to school safety, we will incorporate Safe School Modules training for staff in emergency situations. Some of the training modules include active shooter, crisis response and recovery, and threat assessment. Heritage and Huntington will develop a campus school safety team consisting of security, administration, faculty and staff, the SRO, the student support specialist, and other stakeholders, including students and parents, to review potential threats and discuss safety issues. A campaign will be utilized to refamiliarize our students and families with the Safe Schools mechanism to report. So if you see something, you can say something. We will continue to use our technology to monitor for safety. As you can see, we utilize Gaggle, which monitors the content of students' Google Drive as well as their Gmail accounts. We will continue to use GoGuardian, which monitors the activity of students on the internet and on their Chromebooks. And we will also use, utilize Safe Schools, as mentioned before, as an anonymous tool for students to report any bullying, threats of violence, or any other security concerns via phone, text message, or email.
Through the work of the Campus School Safety Team, protocols will be reviewed and implemented to ensure effective communication throughout the school community. The safety team will include the input of various stakeholders to ensure all voices are heard. As mentioned on the previous slide, Gaggle provides a means to monitor students' accounts and identify potential threats. Connect Five will remain a staple on our communication with families. Heritage and Huntington will utilize phone and email messages to keep families informed. And at this time, I will turn it over to Mrs. Tracy Brooks, Special Assistant to the Superintendent, who will review our student safety policy.
Good evening, members of the board, Matt, Mr. Chairman, Madam Vice Chairman, members of the board, and Dr. Parker. When we began our review of the school and division-wide safety plans and practices that we have in place, we realized that there was a very degree of understanding of all of the measures that we use to support school safety. So we pulled all of the various components together to create the school division's layered network of safety measures that impact the daily safety at all of our schools. So we started with our current policy on school safety, and we revised it to add the school division's layered approach to school safety. So earlier today at our regular monthly meeting, the Policy Committee reviewed the updates that we are proposing to the policy. And they involve developing appropriate relationships within buildings and amongst staff and students, ensuring consistent behavior expectations from students by consistently applying the Student Code of Conduct, developing well-structured staff, student, and family reporting mechanisms, controlling and monitoring building access, using safety drills as required by law, and maintaining a safe physical environment at all of our schools. The updated policy also requires the Superintendent to post the procedures, took the policy annually, and to allow the opportunity for the community to review them and provide input. Now, in terms of the new procedure to the policy, it addresses the twelve layers in the school division's safety framework that Dr. Parker spoke to earlier, such as student reporting procedures, the technology to support student safety, social media monitoring, and communications with parents and the community. It also acknowledges the school division, that the school division staff will use various internal processes and guidance documents to implement the various components of the framework. Now, since the revised policy and the new procedure will come before the School Board at your October nineteenth meeting as a part of the policy review process, Dr. Parker will take one more opportunity to review the, or to speak to the school's safety framework.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I think I, I went through each one of the, the layers there. It's a, it's a pretty, pretty uh thick piece of cake there. So um I will just say that the layered approach to school safety um will be the guiding document to, to fit the Heritage and Huntington return to, to instruction, uh plan, uh where we are looking at enhancing some, some of the uh structural pieces such as more randomized searches, uh increasing security um presence on, on campus, making sure that we have the physical security and the commitment from our, our resource officers to have a um, a, a dedicated school resource officer there uh for, for the entire day. Uh in developing this plan, what I would like to say to the community is, we didn't think about something that would just last a month. We thought about something that would last, that's sustainable. And uh, and, and developing this plan and hearing the input from the staff and from our students and uh, and moving forward, the community, we wanted to make sure that months from now, years from now, that we have a guarantee, uh some, some level of surety that there's going to be a safe campus there at Heritage High School. And we have practices in place that will mitigate any, minimize any possible potential issues, such as the one we experienced on September twentieth. Uh while any day and any time, we can see someone make a bad decision, the goal is with these things in place, is to make sure that students make good decisions, adults work with us to ensure that our schools are safe, our students work with us to report uh potential um threats to our school's safety, and that our adults are trained and understand how to address issues. So with that being said, I'll move on to next steps um in the process. Um and uh this is, Mr. Chairman, is where we will, will be uh working with our community at this point. Uh we've, uh we provided some of the detail to what the plan will contain. Uh now, the next steps are to continue to meet with the faculty um at both schools and make sure they understand the plan and what's to be expected. Uh our teachers will be returning um from virtual, um from teaching virtually at home to the building at some point. That's the next phase of that approach, to get our staff back. And then again, we mentioned in phases. Um as I mentioned at our last board meeting, I did not put a date stamp on any planning because I want to make sure that we follow the processes that are needed to make sure everyone is comfortable moving back to in-person instruction. So until we get the work done, uh we will, we will continue to phase our students, our staff in. So once meeting with staff, answering questions, reviewing the plan, uh we'll encourage our teachers to report uh back for in-person, uh to teach from their classrooms. Um and then we'll start with student and family open houses. Uh our Huntington students are, will be scheduled to return prior to the high school students, uh which will allow us to transition them in, in a, in a comfortable way and to engage with their families. And then we'll, uh using those, the same approach with students, um in family open houses, uh we will trans, to begin to transition our, our Heritage students to uh face-to-face instruction. Now, I could tell you that phase one of this process will begin next week. Uh so we will, we'll finalize the plan, get it in a presentable format, and we will begin to engage the faculties, re-engage the faculties of both schools beginning next week, and start working out a reasonable timeline for them to, um to start putting the other steps in motion. So with that being said, I think that concludes this report. And I would like to open it up, and my staff will, will assist. They've been doing a lot of heavy lifting. Uh and I appreciate all the work that's taken place up to this point. They'll assist with answering any questions that the board may have.
All right, so uh to ensure that every uh board member gets a chance to ask questions, we're going to do one question at a time. All right, so um uh who wants to go first? Mr. Ely?
I just want to first thank the staff and the community for all the hard work that's been put in to present this presentation. Um I just want to think, especially the staff of Heritage High School for all that y'all have been doing to make sure the kids are safe and that the staff is safe. Question I have is um about metal detectors. I know we're going to be doing random metal detectors, um searches. Do we have a cost of how much it would cost to have metal detectors for all kids to go through every day instead of randomly?
Um it's not a matter of cost. It's a matter of practice. Um it's not, it's for sustainable, sustainably over time, that is not a very uh productive practice for a school. Um three, four, five years from now, if we have a, a students and staff go through metal detectors every day, it's the only school in Newport News to do that, and the only school in the region. I would dare say I wouldn't find many teachers to work there, and I probably wouldn't find many students to go there. Um I think it's a matter of practice to do random searches, and the research has shown that it's an ineffective practice over time. Uh while we can increase metal detection randomly, we can uh do searches based on uh tips from our, our, our community and our students. I don't support a everyday uh metal detection process unless there's newer technology that would not require students to stop, open bags. It takes an hour to get everyone processed in. School is starting late. Um that process, while it will be uh welcomed by, by some in, in the community initially, uh it would not be favorable a year from now, two years from now, as a sustainable practice, and it impacts the culture of the school. So um I think with that being said, Mr. Ely, I'm not recommending uh metal detectors on every door unless there's newer technology that doesn't require uh a, an airport-type security approach to, to entering folks in school every day.
And my second part of the question is, I know we've been doing, saying Heritage Huntington plan. I want to make this so, this is a Newport News Public School System Plan, because this could have happened at any school. So I don't want us to just continue to focus on Heritage and Huntington. I just want to make sure we're evening out, like having four, three security guards at a school. When we used to, when I started, it was like seven, seven security officers. So I'm trying to figure how we go from seven to three. Like, do we have a big disconnect in amount of students on the road? Or do we have so many students that went virtual where we didn't need, where we only needed three? So I want to make sure across the board, like for instance, Warwick High School, that campus is, it's like, almost like a col, small college campus. So if something like that, that only have four or three security guards, officers, that's, that's going to set us up for failure. So I just want to make sure at all our high schools, not just Ha, um Heritage, we have the adequate number of officers and taking the same um procedures, like more rampant um searches. I just want to do, we doing all these random searches just at Heritage. And there are guns in all the schools. It's not just at Heritage. Just, we find guns in all the schools. So I want to make sure we're continuing same practices, not just at Heritage, at Mansfield, at Warwick. It just happened at Heritage.
Right.
I just want to make sure we're doing this across the board.
And, and I will applaud you for that, because I think, I believe that our Heritage students are good students, they're good kids. And they're coming from, many of them are coming from good families.
Absolutely.
So I will be the first person to applaud that, that, that comment of yours and say that what, uh while we are looking at a safety structure for the return of, of students and families, they've gone through a traumatic situation. So we, so they're, so we were, we're required to do something more to, uh to, to get our staff and our students back to normalcy, some level of normalcy in that school. The system that we're talking about is, is, is effective in all of our schools. And um, and it has been effective in Heritage as well. That school's built in the mid-nineties. This is the first incident that we're talking about that of this nature inside of Heritage High School. Um so we have effective practices. We can't throw them out of the way. Um I wouldn't uh look at uh putting metal detectors on every school in Newport News and then, and having, having that a, a, a process that we, um that we um manage on a daily basis. Our students are no different than any student in this community, in, in the city and in this state. We have great kids, we have great families. And it takes a community to make sure.
We have great kids, we have great families, and it takes a community to make sure that our schools are safe. So, Mr. Ely, I, I'm glad you mentioned that because I feel wholeheartedly that we need to make sure that we're looking systemically at what we do across our school divisions, not treating Heritage differently and our students differently and looking at them differently than any other students in our school division. I don't think that that strategy will last, will be welcomed very long. So with that being said, I look at the randomized approach and as well as our other schools, increasing the bus deterrent, it's a deterrent, looking at that approach in all of our schools and making sure that we're consistently following those safety practices regarding our security staff and regarding resource officers. We are coming out of a pandemic and we have all suffered from a lack of staff and a lack of employees and employee shortages. So we, we do have to make some adjustments with our staffing as we continue to hire new personnel and bring them in. You know, I, I believe our, our police force is experiencing some of the same, city staff are experiencing some of the same challenges that we are, but we'll continue to make sure that we have adequate security in our schools.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Ely. Other questions? Yes, Ms. Sroeslaw.
I just want to say thank you for just a display of, of community that we've seen with this event, Dr. Parker and his staff and the students and the parents. And I think we're really identifying some areas that have worked well for us and some that has demonstrated in the presentation that we need to take a look at. And one that's sticking out for me are the SROs and how are we funding them and how would we be able to move forward with more in our schools? Dr. Parker, what's your, what's your thought on that?
Well, the city, the SROs are funded through the city and that they're hired obviously by Chief Drew and that's a program that the city and our police department operates and they're are, they're very effective partners with us. They are in the process of, of training and hiring more SROs. So their current allocation is 13, which they support our secondary schools, mostly middle and high schools. They are currently short on staff a little bit, so they're filling positions and working on, on replenishing their SRO group. When they do that, we will maintain one SRO designated for each high school. Chief Drew, when we met with him, said, "Tell me exactly what you need and we will get it for you, we will make it happen for you." He is committed to that. He's committed to the structure we're putting in place and they have been active partners in planning with us.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Other questions? Yes, Ms. Amon.
Thank you, Chairman Brown. And I also want to say thank you for all the information and the hard work that's gone into these recommendations. And I do want to echo what Dr. Parker, what you said as far as the random searches or metal detectors. I actually looked back at some historic situations to see some of the recommendations coming out of those. My cousin was a student at Columbine when that occurred back, back in the late '90s. So I kind of went back to that and it seems over the years that was a different situation. But generally, there hasn't been a move towards consistent use of metal detectors, more randomized use or, you know, deterrent approach seems to have been the preferred successful method. So I just wanted to echo that and thank you. And I had, I have two questions. One, and I don't want to get into too much detail on this, but we've talked, we've seen a lot of sort of front-of-the-house like recommendations and some changes. Have we also looked sort of at some of our communications and processes, be it with the police department and the justice system to just make sure we've got good, good reports and good processes should anything need to go back and forth or any information we need to know? And then secondly, talking about the students getting notified of numbers and ways they can reach out for support, just so maybe those that are at different schools might know should something come up in their schools, how are the students informed of that? Did it go to their student view? Was it pushed to their texts? So we as parents and also students and community members, should something happen, we know where to tell the kids to look, to make connections?
Two, two very good questions. We, we will have meetings with our representatives from our juvenile justice system, the Commonwealth Attorney, and obviously following a backup with Chief Drew to ensure that we have continued communication between our courts for students who, who need, who are potential candidates for alternative placement moving forward. We, we have some good communication during the school year. There's some, there's some breaks over the summer and some other things that we need to have some conversation about, but I believe that there will be productive conversations when we move forward with that. The other piece is the reporting. Mr. Jenkins back there in the back has been giving us, educating us on the capabilities of some, some of the products that we currently have that can be enhanced to allow for rapid notification of staff in an emergency situation and also rapid notification of families. So, Mr. Jenkins, I'll give you an opportunity to come up and talk a little bit about how can we enhance and improve our rapid notification during emergencies around our school division.
Good evening, Chairman Brown, Vice Chair Sroeslaw, members of the board. Ms. Amon, specifically to answer the question I think you were asking was around the student notification to see something, say something. We were asking them to call in or were you asking?
Or if they, if they were to go, if they needed a number to call for support or something, how do they get that info?
So I can, I can let Dr. Mitchell answer that question around the support line and whether we will publish that for the whole district or just right now. I believe it's been targeted to students at Heritage and Huntington. As far as notifications, we mentioned Safe Schools and Gaggle and a couple of other tools. We're going to, we're in the process now of doing a relaunch of a campaign to just remind students, we're going to put up posters, there will be student view notifications that'll be on social media. These are the numbers to call. There'll be, you can call in tips by, you can do phone, you can do email, you can do text messages. And then also we're working with one of our other vendors on a comprehensive emergency management system that will allow us to do things like rapid notifications to families and a reunification process, an automated reunification process that'll help us in future incidents to know where each child is and whether they've been re-unified with their parent or guardian.
Quick question.
Oh, sir. Well, hang on, Mr. Ely. We want to let Ms. Amon finish, finish her question and then we're going to go Dr. Best next.
Okay.
Okay. Yes, well, and just was, if the students, let's say you are a student at Heritage, how did you get the, find out the numbers to know that you could call after hours or until eight?
Great question. One of the ways it was put in synergy, but we also understood that, and Canvas, that some students had to leave their computers.
Sure.
So then we worked with the administrators in the school and then also the communications department pushed out phone numbers. One of the other things that I failed to mention earlier in terms of other schools is that because obviously students in other schools had some angst about it and they also had siblings that may have attended the other schools, the professional school counselors took the opportunity in the mornings, at morning meetings, to meet with students of every grade level and share that information with them as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. Then, oh, yes, please, I want to, Ms. Jenkins to finish.
That was it? I think that was it.
That was it? Okay. Dr. Best, I believe, do you have a question now?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. And just to, I would like to thank the staff as well for this report and just to kind of reiterate what Mr. Ely talked about just a little. I have spoken with many people and to staff members throughout the community regarding the incident at Heritage. And one of the things that pretty much every student and parent and some of the, and many of the staff, as many of the staff have reported, was that they would feel more comfortable with metal detectors as well. And like Dr. Parker and Ms. Amon, I too have done some research regarding metal detectors in school and the, they are not looked at as the most favorable things for varied reasons. That's what the research kind of indicates. And so I'm going to ask, can we maybe prepare something if it's just four or five bullets for parents just to not rush it off as to some of our reasoning because everybody hasn't had the opportunity to do research? And then even in spite sharing some of the things with parents, especially parents and some students, they feel, still would feel more comfortable with that. So my first question is, could, Dr. Parker or some staff member, could you just share a little bit about where we are now as far as metal detectors in schools? Like what do we have? Is there one handheld metal detector at each school? Are they shared? Could you share a little bit about what we have for now, if you don't mind?
Well, with increased, with increased activity, we obviously plan to increase our, our supply, but we do hand, we have hand wand, supplies of hand wand and standing metal detectors. I have Dr. Nelson come on up and, Dr. Nelson, if you have anything to add to that question regarding our capabilities to provide either random or sustained metal detecting searches.
Good afternoon or evening. Each high school has three walkthrough metal detectors. They have six wands that they can use and we can put those up at any time that we need to. Like Dr. Parker said, if something is coming through the pike, we're aware of it, then we'll make sure that we take the necessary actions to try to debunk whatever is coming through. We take our job very seriously. I started working at Heritage in 1996, was there for 11 and a half years. So that's, school is like my baby right there. So, but we do take everything seriously that comes through for each school, not just where we are at now. It's unfortunate, but it happened and we're just trying to get back on track so that the students feel comfortable, the parents, the teachers, staff, you know, will know that we are doing what we can to make sure that hopefully we could, this will never happen again.
And, and while you're on the podium, Dr. Nelson, could you, in terms of what you're currently allocated, increasing random searches on campus, would that require more material resources? I know you have my commitment to purchase whatever you need in that regard.
Yes, sir.
I don't normally give a blank check to many people. But do you feel that more, more means would be, more resources would be needed?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So, Dr. Best, I think we have, in completing our planning, we will ensure that, that our schools have the required materials to have sustained randomized metal detection. And also I want to talk about the standing metal detectors and how they could be used. Obviously, we use them for on-campus games, basketball games and everyone else. Everyone knows that in Newport News, you do walk-through, some form of metal detection for, for on-campus activities. But you can, in, in cases of a bus search, they could be done two different ways where that's, the students from that bus could be exited off the bus and then they could enter a certain access through a standing detector with, with staff. You would have to have the staff allocated in the morning to do that. And obviously in smaller populations, you can provide that type of randomized search for entire buses, more buses, numerous buses from, if need be. You also can just stand folks, three people can stand in a bus, one get on the rear of the bus, two at the, two at the entrance to the bus and as the students exit, their bags of church are searched, they're wanded, while the person in the rear follows the students off the bus to make sure they're not ditching anything on the school bus. So there's several ways that we can do randomized searches. Classrooms, you can use metal detectors in the classroom, searching bags. That way, we also use dogs that not only are able to identify ammunition but also illegal substances. So those randomized searches are also in, used in our school division as well. So I wanted to make sure the community understands that we are using metal, metal detection in our search procedures and increasing randomized searches is a very productive and effective and proven way as a deterrent to, to minimize bad decisions from students on campus. Anything else to add to that, Dr. Nelson?
I don't know. You said it. Yeah. We're good.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Parker and thank.
And thank you, Dr. Best. Appreciate you.
Thank you, Dr. Best.
I had another question. I had another question.
Okay.
I'm sorry, there is a delay and that's why it kind of sounds like that. But I thank you, Dr. Nelson and Dr. Parker. I, I think that information will help the public to feel a little better as opposed to us just saying what the research kind of says. So I do appreciate that. Just two other questions. You talked about the athletics resuming next week. I've talked to over a dozen students, students, many of them are participants in things such as band athletics. We always seem to be right on it with athletics and I love athletes, so nothing against athletics. But what about bands and other activities because they need it just as much as the athletes? So that's my first question. And can you share with us a little bit how the staff and the student attendance has been since this incident?
I'll have Dr. Blow come up regarding that. Regarding band, I would just say, Dr. Best, that obviously everything's a process. And while we know that athletic teams right now will be allowed to resume with the support of our, our folks, they have a set schedule that they have to maintain in order to, to meet the, the goals of their seasons. So I understand the, getting them moving forward and I believe that next step would be other activities. But I'll turn that over to Dr. Blow because she's been working directly with the faculty and administration at the school.
Yes, I appreciate your question, Dr. Best. We have been in communication with the athletic director and the building principal in reference to athletics returning. We know that the season for the fall sports is very quickly drawing to an end, so we do want to have those students have an opportunity to participate in activities or the athletic events before the end of the season. So we will resume those events. As far as band and other activities, at this point, we have not finalized when those activities will resume. Again, it was a little bit more of urgency in reference to athletics because we're approaching the end of the fall season.
Attendance.
Attendance. In reference to attendance as far as staff is concerned, the majority of the staff members have been working virtually and talking and meeting with the administration at Heritage. Approximately five, six, maybe a few more teachers have been coming to the building working regularly, but the majority have been working virtually. So it is very important for us to gradually transition our teachers back into working in the building. So that is why part of the portion, or portion of the plan is for the teachers and faculty to return to re-acclimate themselves to being back in the building. As far as students are concerned, the attendance has been a bit sporadic. As mentioned in the presentation, teachers are doing class check-ins, so students should be logging into their asynchronous Zoom sessions. If nothing else, for the teacher to be able to check in with them, make sure they're doing okay, and then begin on their asynchronous assignments. For those that who have not attended, the faculty and staff as well as the support of the crisis team and counselors are reaching out to those students to try and make contact with them. But the attendance has been a bit spotty because of the situation that's occurred.
Thank you. Mr. Hunter? No questions at this time?
I am on the floor.
So I'll just ask one question in particular about our policy revision. So very excited to see that coming through and I want to applaud the policy committee for getting on that so quickly. So the question really is along the lines of approximately, can we estimate when will the board have an opportunity to act on the policy revision? And then secondly, if you could just highlight for the public, because we've talked a lot about this during this crisis, that we have a very robust set of procedures that are already on our website in board docs for everyone to see. And what is some of the contrast in procedure that is new coming into this new set of procedures vice the procedures that we already have?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I think the main, the main thing, and I think Mrs. Brooks mentioned it, there was a varying levels of understanding of what our safety procedures are. And I think, I think we take a lot of things for granted in terms of putting that whole comprehensive system in one place so that we understand how all of it plays a part in keeping our schools safe. That procedure will capture that information so that, you know, long after you're sitting here and I'm sitting here, that, that those processes will be understood. It's put in front of the community annually and opportunities are for the community to provide feedback or input as, as changes to, to safety measures or safety procedures or newer practices come available. We have a place to make sure that that is. We, we have always, and I just want to make sure I reiterate this this evening, all of our schools have safety and emergency plans in place. So they have, they have their own level of planning at their building site level. So this will not change that. This just incorporates, gives us a one place where all of that procedure. It also directs the superintendent, the policy now directs the superintendent to ensure that that, those procedures are reviewed annually, updated, put in front of the community for feedback to ensure that our schools and our community understand what it takes to maintain a safe environment in our schools. And Mrs. Brooks, I will turn the rest of it over to you.
Thank you, Dr. Parker. I was just going to say our plan is to bring them before you. I was just going to say, our plan is to bring them before you in two weeks at your October nineteenth meeting through the policy review process.
Thank you for that swift action by the, by the committee to do that work. And so it sounds like, Dr. Parker, that our new policy will essentially increase communication. That was one of the areas that we talked about, making improvements on, so that will increase communication, because every year, the public is going to have an opportunity to look at the new procedures. And this kind of just gets that procedure, those procedures in front of the public all the time, so that there's more of a constant communication.
Yes, sir.
Thank the administration and staff for, for working that. All right. So we'll just go around, are there any additional questions? Yes, Mr. Ely?
Early we was talking about the hotline. Would the hotline be a capability for students across the division if they know, like we said before in the presentation, a lot of our tips come from the community or actual students? Is there like a hotline that students could text or call in if they know something is about to happen? Please.
Yes, Mr. Ely. So we are, what I was talking about, we're going to be relaunching a campaign. So we've always had a system, but we're going to be relaunching a campaign to really publish the number and let them know that they're, they can call, if they're not comfortable calling, they can text, they can email from their Gmail accounts. We'll be working with our partners in school leadership and with the communications department. The vendor's going to be providing us with some new posters and some little social media things that we can put out there for our families so that every, and it's not really just limited to students, the, the parents can call this number or send an email. So we'll get all that information out, and we'll make sure we get it out to, to the parents as well as the students.
Perfect. Thank you so much. And my, just a quick comment. Just with my talking with teachers, talking to the community, I just want to make sure, Dr. Parker, that we make sure our teachers and staff and students feel safe going back to Heritage High School. A lot of our teachers, they're terrified. A lot of the students, they are terrified. You know, talking with one custodian the other day, visited the school to take them breakfast, she broke down and started crying, me and our conversation. So I just want to make sure, I know we're going to do, the ideal is not to have metal detectors every day. I'd get that a hundred percent. But I just want to make sure our safety of our students and our teachers, they feel that we have their back a hundred percent. I don't want it just to start for the first week, we doing metal detector searches, we doing bus searches, and then next month, all of that stop. I want to keep that same energy going throughout our school system, because we're in different times. When I was in school, I graduated in two thousand and two. You may have a kid bringing gun in school, I brought my dad gun in school, he gets suspended. That kid was not the kid that's going to go and get in a fight and then shoot. We, it's different times from two thousand to two thousand and ten to two thousand and twenty-one. So measures that we feel is not, it don't make sense. Well, we live in a different times. So I just want to make sure we're proactive, maybe even bring out an outside company to do a study for all of our schools, to make sure we have great security plans in place, and that we support Dr. Nelson with the latest technology, because that's why my number one goal, our goal is to educate these kids, but my main priority is making sure they get educated in a safe manner, not just the, the students, but the teachers and staff as well. Because visiting those school, the faces, because I'm always at Heritage, I'm always in all the schools. So I could tell if the energy level was down. The energy level was at ground zero, and I don't like it. So I want even that, even boost the morale up, even the principal. Are you okay? Yeah, I'm okay. But I seen that principal, he's normally upbeat. You, it looked like the world came to an end on him just recently. So I just want to make sure we're giving the staff, the teachers, the bus drivers, the custodians, and those kids a hundred percent of the support and wraparound service they need. And I believe in you and your team. But it just hits a little different when you there at the scene, you see the teachers come out crying, you see the kids coming out crying. So I just want to make sure when they do go back in their school, they're a hundred percent supported, not just at Heritage, but across our division. And I got faith in you and your team. I'm not questioning are we going to do it. I'm just saying I want to make sure, you know, when I'm passionate, I'm passionate about it. And I'm passionate about making sure our kids and our teachers feel safe and sound.
Thank you, Ms. Ely.
That's it.
I think my staff is, I'll say for my staff to that, to your comments, we, we care about Heritage High School. And I've been a high school principal. I've had students, and I've gone through crisis situations in the past. Unfortunately, all of them are different, and all of them impact individuals on a different, in a different way. I think the work of Dr. Mitchell's team and the supports that you've heard this evening will continue as long as they're needed. But with every crisis situation, you have to find a pathway forward. And at some, and there are many students, we've also heard from, from our staff and our community also, that many students are not doing well at home. They're not, they're not, they're not necessarily having access to the resources that they need, such as food and other things, and the stability of not being in school. So I want everyone to hear that crisis, crisis such as this impact everyone in different ways. We have to find a clear pathway forward for those who need more assistance than others, and there's nothing wrong with that. We're there to provide the additional support needed to students, staff, or families. But we also understand that getting back to normalcy is the best medicine that we can provide under circumstances of this type. So my staff are ready to do the work. We appreciate the work that our school staff have done for us, to make, with us, to make sure that we can find a pathway to move forward. That's the one assurance I can give this evening, is that we will do it safely, we will do it with compassion, we will do it with preparation, and we'll make sure we make logical steps moving forward. And that's one of the reasons why I don't say with a hard date, we're coming back on at, you know, such date, because that work needs to be done. So with that being said, there's a reason why you're not leaving with a strong date coming from the superintendent at this time, because I think the work is more important than communicating a date tonight. And we'll make sure we're committed to the work of getting everyone back safely and comfortably, and we'll continue to support those who are not. But we will get back, and we'll make sure that we're, that these students have a great school year and that they're getting access to education. We have a lot of seniors out there who should be thinking about where they're applying to college right now. So we, we know that life will go on, and we, we need to make sure that we're preparing our students as best possible to make sure that happens for them. So thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Dr. Best, did you have one more question?
Yes, I did. Thank you, Mr. Chair. You all had mentioned in the report some of the community agencies that we're working with, such as Community Services Board, and I think you may have mentioned Riverside, but I want to say thank you to those agencies. Could someone maybe share, if it has not been done, what is the plan to possibly connect with some of the maybe closer community resources or possibly even some grassroots community resources? And the reason I ask that is because being a former professional school counselor and part of an emergency response team, sometimes we would see that kids would gravitate towards people that they know, people that sometimes look like them or people sometimes from their communities, and it's because that is what they are familiar with. And I'm not saying that in all the cases, but I'm saying sometimes. So I wonder, have you all been able to connect with any community, closer community or grassroots community resources? And if not, is there a plan to incorporate, incorporate them?
Yes, Dr. Best, in our plan, you, we mentioned that there would be a campus safety committee that would be composed of not only school staff and students, but, and parents, but also community members. That's a good segue in. We also know that there have been resources in the past that have been provided at city level that we will continue to, to investigate, just to make sure that we have good access in the community to work with us. I mentioned earlier that the most vital resource to a school division in terms of campus safety is the community. So increasing our awareness of the, the reporting mechanisms we have in place, making sure that we have good grassroots efforts in the community to, to deter violence and to, to provide assistance when students need it, to make sure they're safe, is very important to us. And we will, that outreach will, will be part of our plan.
Thank you.
All right. Well, I want to thank everyone for coming out to our special meeting tonight to address school safety. And as we know, we may not have answered all questions, and we're sure that we'll hear from you. And please do contact the board and let us know additional questions that you have. And we will be more than, we're very eager to run them down. But we do hope that tonight we were able to address a lot of questions that you did have, and that this presentation offered some reassurances about our progress and our plans going forward. And with that, we hope that everyone has a good safe night.